Welcome to the city council meeting. If you could take just a moment and silence your cell phones, and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Aiden, where is Aiden? Aiden McPhee will come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you want to stand right there with that microphone, that would be terrific. Aiden, tell us where you go to school?
I'm home schooled.
Okay, and you're with Troop 75? All right, well, welcome. Lead the way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's pretty good. We have a special first for tonight. Tonight is the first night of our new city attorney. Brad Rannam is joining us, and our interim city attorney is still here with us. We're kind of doing a little transition. Welcome, Brad.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm gonna thank Sabrina at the end, but thank you in advance. Sabrina, I have to tell you, I sent Sabrina an email this week, and the auto reply is something like, "I am no longer the interim city attorney." Exclamation.
I will not be checking this email.
Okay. But no, really, Sabrina, you've been fantastic, and it was a little longer than expected, but we're here. We have, we're gonna add to our agenda under Presentations. It's not on the printed agenda. We're adding an update on parking at Memorial Stadium and McCormick Field, just so folks know that. That'll be under Presentations. But first, we have Proclamations. And the first is actually an award. It's the Walk Friendly Community Award, and Barb Me is here to talk about that. And we're all wearing our walkers on our...
Gims.
Yeah, our little walker pants.
Mayor Manheimer, council members. I am Barb Me, and I coordinate the city's pedestrian and bicycle program. I have here with me members of the Asheville Bicycle and Pedestrian Task Force, their Walk Friendly Subcommittee, who will be presenting you with the award tonight. While a large part of being a walk-friendly community is about city actions, like funding, building, maintaining facilities, enforcing the laws that keep us safe, it's also about people in the community who encourage us, and at this moment, most importantly, people in the community who take time to fill out the nomination. Grace and these other Subcommittee members did the hard work of researching and preparing the nominations, so it only seems fitting that they should be the ones to present you with Asheville's most recent Walk Friendly Community Award.
Well, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm Grace, and I'm one member. There are several others that are here today, Claudia Nix and Randy Warren. And as most, you most likely are aware, the award is a redesignation of the community at the Silver Level that was awarded five years ago. And this award recognizes that there have been improvements in the walking environment, but that the changes don't indicate that the community is ready to move up to a higher level. Today, I would like to share some of the areas where our committee noted improvement, and to highlight that the city's role in bringing about these changes was significant. Noteworthy has been a focus on collaboration. The city and NC DOT have established a joint pedestrian safety working group, which has met, I understand, meets monthly, and has resulted in collaboration on several projects, including the sidewalk connection on Fairview Road. Other actions of note is the funding you provide for the, the funding you provide for the neighborhood sidewalk plan. And the plan includes a dedicated process, which ensures parity in funding and addresses the need for safe and accessible sidewalks in neighborhoods. This process ensures that neighborhood sidewalks are not directly competing for limited resources with sidewalks on main corridors, such as Haywood Road. And then there's your vital support for updating a much-needed new pedestrian plan, and there is funding now for a consultant. What's most important is your continued support will be essential for the implementation of the plan. And the last action I'd like to mention is the city's advocacy for the Watch For Me NC campaign, which shows that the city views educational, educational programs for motorists and pedestrians as important. And what's of interest is that the community's involvement in this campaign was instrumental in the city's receiving our initial Silver Designation five years ago, so we're pleased that it's been continuing. It's evident that with your support and the support of the city staff in many departments, including police, transportation, finance, public works, and capital projects, that there have been improvements in making the city a safer, more enjoyable environment for walkers over the past five years. However, we all recognize that there still is significant work to be done to make our community safe and pleasant for pedestrians. So we urge you to continue your support and take action that prioritize pedestrian safety and move Asheville up to the Walk Friendly Gold Level. So thank you very much.
When Claudia says... I wanna, I wanted to thank, thank you for this award, for the city, on behalf of everyone who has worked, that's sort of odd to do this, I'm gonna do it with this one. Who has worked so hard to make our city more inviting and walkable. And I understand that Asheville was the first city to get anything above a bronze, and now we're one of only two still in the state, so that is a feather in our cap. But we do recognize we have a long way to go in the battle to make sure pedestrians are safe and feel comfortable walking in our city, and this is a nice occasion to remind us of the importance of doing something every day to make Asheville a better place to live. And I want to thank you all for doing your part, working so hard in that effort. Okay, next, we have Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month, and the Vice Mayor will present this proclamation. If you're here for this item, please come forward. I know Bob and Beth Pape are here, and several other folks, so please all come forward, absolutely.
Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease, and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. Whereas there is inadequate data on incidence and prevalence of Parkinson's disease, but it is estimated to affect nearly 1 million people in the United States, and that number is expected to more than double by 2040. Whereas there are millions of Americans who are caregivers, family members, and friends greatly impacted by Parkinson's disease. Whereas it is estimated that the annual economic burden of Parkinson's disease is over $26.4 billion per year, and indirect cost to patients and family members total $6.3 billion. Whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause in most individuals is still unknown, and there is currently not an objective test or biomarker to diagnose Parkinson's disease. Whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary from person to person, and can include tremors, slowness of movement, and rigidity, gait and balance difficulty, speech and swallowing disturbances, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. Whereas volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life in persons living with Parkinson's disease and their families. Whereas increased research, education, and community support services are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today. Now therefore, Esther E. Manheimer, the Mayor of the City of Asheville, does hereby proclaim April 2019 as Parkinson's Awareness Prevention Month in Asheville, and urges our citizens to raise their awareness of Parkinson's disease in order to have a significant impact on the quality of life for family living with the disease.
Hi, my name is Beth Pape. Thank you for listening and the proclamation. My husband has Parkinson's, so I have it too. Two years ago, 35 people came to our monthly Asheville Parkinson Support Group meetings. As chairperson, I should be proud to tell you that attendance is now closing in on 100. Instead, I'm heartsick because I know that only 1 in 100 can make it to meetings. High attendance just means that the number of Asheville residents with Parkinson's may have tripled in two years. That would pretty much substantiate what the proclamation says about the growth of this disease. I won't bore you with numbers, but if most of the new residents in Asheville are Baby Boomers, and 10% of Baby Boomers have Parkinson's, you and I know we have a problem. Parkinson's patients need reliable public transportation, they need sidewalks, parks, and recreation that are safe for them, so thank you to the sidewalk folks. We need you to support research by telling your congressman that we need that funding. 23 and me did a study of all Michael J. Fox Foundation patients. They pretty much confirmed that most PD is not genetic, it's environmental. The principal environmental suspects are Roundup and insecticides. So while you're busy looking at how to get to zero carbon by 2040, please look into how we can get to zero on those killers too. Our crops really will do better with pollinators around. Our children will grow stronger without Roundup in their food, and they will be wiser and happier if their grandparents are caring for them, not the other way around. Thank you for your consideration and this proclamation. It really means a lot to all of us.
All right, our final proclamation is Earth Day, and Julie Mayfield will present this proclamation, and I have here that Sophie Mullinay is here to say it's an X, maybe it looks like a Y.
I'm assuming it's Sophie Mullin-X.
Mullin-X, okay, not, that is, I'm glaring at our clerk, it looks like a Y. If there's, and if there's anyone else you have here that you would like to come forward... Is there anyone else in the room who loves the earth? Anybody? Anybody? All right, we're just gonna assume that you're all up here joining in on Earth Day. Before I read the, well, actually, I'll read it. There's a bit of a typo. I'm just gonna skip over the typo, and then, and then I have one other thing to say. So, here we go, Earth Day. Whereas humankind is currently facing tremendous global challenges affecting every community, including large-scale migration, extreme inequality and poverty, degradation of ecosystems, mass extinction of species, and global climate change. And whereas all people of this earth, no matter their race, gender, income, sexual orientation, or national origin, have a right to a healthy environment. And whereas the youth of the world are our most valuable resource and represent a source of endless creativity and potential. Whereas it is necessary for the citizens of our global community to develop green jobs and to build an innovative and equitable green economy to combat the aforementioned global challenges. And whereas expanding environmental education and climate literacy is vital to enhance the aware, excuse me, enhance awareness about the environment, inform decision-making, and protect future generations. And whereas it is essential to expand and diversify the global environmental movement to achieve maximum progress. And whereas Earth Day is an annual reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship commitments, and sustainability efforts. Now therefore, I, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of Asheville, have the distinct honor of proclaiming April 22, 2019, as Earth Day throughout the city, and encourage all citizens, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and promote environmental and climate literacy. And let me just mention, for those of you looking to celebrate Earth Day in a very practical way, I encourage you to go to the website WNCfortheplanet.org. That's WNCfortheplanet.org. And there you will find an extensive listing of a whole host of events and activities that are happening this month in Celebration of Earth Month. Some of them are service projects, some of them are fun things to do, but that, if you, if you want to take the opportunity to celebrate the earth in a very focused way this month, I encourage you to do that. And so here again is Sophie Mullin.
Thank you so much to city council leadership, and especially to the Office of Sustainability with Asheville for their leadership and support in making Asheville a community that's committed to environmental stewardship. I especially want to thank the city for its ongoing support of the creation of the Blue Horizons Project, which I coordinate. This is a project that empowers everyone in our community to take advantage of free, usually free, resources that help them lower their energy use and lower our community's energy demand. That helps prevent the need for new fossil-fueled-powered power plants and helps create our cleaner energy future here in Buncombe County and Asheville. I invite everyone to get involved at bluehorizonsproject.com to take action today. Thank you so much.
Next on our agenda is our Consent Agenda. Are there any questions, comments, or any items that anyone wants considered separately on the Consent Agenda?
I just wanted to call out the We Can Neighborhood for stepping up to take care of the landscaping in the area that you are proposing to do that in. That's a great, a great partnership with the city, and thank you for taking that on.
I will note that there are a number of festivals, apparently, that are coming up here. All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the consent, approve that Consent Agenda?
I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the Consent Agenda? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. We have actually two presentations and reports, as I mentioned before. Our first presentation and report is a water system update. Our Water Director, David Melton, will provide this update. Obviously, we have experiencing some serious issues with water that are mostly resolved now, but we're gonna hear a little bit about, about all that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for this opportunity tonight to present this report. First, I want to say that we sincerely sympathize with the frustration that our customers have felt over the recent discolor of water and loss of water in certain areas. The city takes these instances seriously, and we understand that both residences and businesses depend on the city to, to deliver high-quality water. We take responsibility for the frustration and are committed to improve moving forward. What I would like to discuss tonight is updates on testing results, lessons learned, and what you can expect from us moving forward. There were two separate events that caused the inconveniences for, for many of our residents. This was a perfect storm that resulted from us trying to upgrade the system and make improvements to the River Arts District. Throughout both events, standard protocol. The water was tested daily and increased during this event, with an emphasis on bacteriological testing as well as other parameters. Magnanes levels were elevated, which caused discolor of water that everybody experienced and saw. We also tested for lead in 11 different locations throughout the city and throughout the system, with all of them being below detectable level. This information, as you can see on the screen, can be accessed through the city's website under City Projects, and the project page is Spring 2019 Water, I forgot the last part.
We'll get it.
Okay, focusing back on the magnanes, we had heightened levels of magnanes, which we tested for magnanes early on when the first instance started. We had some increased levels or heightened levels of magnanes well below the 2.2, 0.2 threshold. Through flushing, we actually got that down. So until we became aware it was a bigger issue, a few of the test runs there, and you can see that on the material on the website, we didn't test for magnanes, but when it started back up and we were aware of how widespread it had gotten, we started those parameters back up. As you can see here, magnanes may cause undesirable taste and odor in tap water, may cause damage to water equipment, which that is mainly filters, may make chlorine less effective in suppressing bacteria in municipal water, which we didn't, luckily, we didn't experience any of that. Our chlorine residuals or our disinfectant residual was very good all the way through the system in all samples we pulled. In the last one, we obviously saw will cause water to be discolored. And from the U.S. EPA, magnanes is not considered harmful to human health, but is more of a nuisance. Lessons learned. What we've heard from our customers is the timeliness of communications and the clarity of the messages need to be improved. We must communicate to customers beyond the immediate area, especially in major events like we had, and both of these, to add a little bit of context to it, really large diameter water mains. The first one being leaving our Black Mountain Water Treatment Plant, which is one of the main feeds to the city. And information must be clear about what customers should do. I wanted to reiterate what we had said before, there will be billing adjustments. We ask customers to flush their private side plumbing, which they did, which greatly helped with the calls we had and a lot of inconveniences that they were experiencing. So we feel it's not fair to ask them to pay for that extra water that we asked them to use. So the billing adjustments, we're still working out the details on how we're going to implement that, so it may take up to a couple of months to fully implement that. If anybody has any questions, they're welcome to call the customer service line at 251-1122 with any questions in the meantime. Moving forward, communication improvements. We have plans in place to make internal communication improvements with, with the team we have here at the city. Plans to better utilize our AVL alerts to communicate during a significant event. We do a really good job with our normal boil water advisories that we started doing in 2016, but we need to expand that in these kind of instances to help get the word out and help, help people to know what to do in these situations. And we need to be clear. We need to clearly state what to do and update that as we have information. We need to proactively communicate, the makeup of what the issue is, and in this instance, it was sediment, and we didn't communicate that early on because in instances, you want to test, and test again to confirm, to make sure that's what you got before you release that information. And as it says, as soon as tests are in, we should be communicating that. And our ultimate goal is for the communications to come from us. We want to originate those communications, so in and of that, we're gonna, we're gonna work with our partners, our schools, our hospitals, our other entities throughout the community, to hopefully get them to call us first, and let us update them, and give them the message, and actually tell them what's going on at that point in time. And again, information is available on the city's website under City Projects. It's a good way to stay in touch, and I think a real good step in the direction of that improvement we're talking about. And I'll be happy to ask any question, answer any questions if you have.
One thing I saw on social media was that folks that rent, that rent a house or their apartment or whatever, we're not getting the notifications. Is there any way that we can reach out to renters, even though they may not be paying the water bill itself? Because I assume that the notifications go to whoever we send water bills to. Is there a way for the city to reach renters, other than encouraging everybody to get on Asheville Alert?
That's the best way to do it, because whether they're renting the house or own the house, either way, they can sign up for the service, then they're assured to get the, the news when it goes out.
Can you go over how one signs up for Asheville Alert, AVL Alert?
It's pretty intuitive, it's the same, it's on the city website. You scroll down to the banner and click on AVL Alerts. Then it's got, it lays out what to do, takes about five minutes at the most to be able to get through it. And you can sign up, you can get the messages through email, text, phone calls, or a combination of all of those. So it's, it's a really good tool, and we even use it internally and externally now.
Any other questions? Okay. We have one other presentation tonight, an add-on item, and that is the update on parking at Memorial Stadium, McCormick Field. This is, and Rodrick Simmons is gonna talk to us about this. Our Parks and Recreation Director. I think somebody's filming in the audience, and it's like shining, it's sort of...
Are we allowed to film?
Yeah, you are, it's just like, there's the flashlight is on or something like that. It's just like, ugh. This will, this is all being recorded as well. It's live right now, and then it's available on a YouTube stream that'll be uploaded very quickly afterwards as well, so, okay.
Mayor, Council, Rodrick Simmons, Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Asheville, coming tonight to discuss Memorial Stadium and mountainside parking, and how those facilities are being used in terms of allocating events and special events and activities, how we're managing that parking plan. and activities, how we're managing that parking plan, from some of the concerns that have come from the community.
Excuse me, Rodrick, yeah, thank you.
Ken Putnam will also be involved in this. We kind of tag teamed this with, one is park usage and then flowing over into a transportation neighborhood impact mitigation plan. So the area that we're discussing tonight, in our Neighborhood Recreation Service Plan, is the East End neighborhood within that census tract. And these are some of the, a larger blowout scale of what the area impacts in terms of if you've got East End, South Slope, downtown. So you see it's real tight, restricted site with a lot of urban density development within those and a lot of connections. So the mountainside park, so to give the lay of the land, at the northern part of the screen, East End neighborhood is the top boundary. That neighborhood has expanded over the last few years, there's also 500 unit complexes right next to the mountainside park. Mountainside Park was named after a housing project area that, years ago, that was there that served that neighborhood where kids could come across the street and use the park. When that development was tore down, the park hasn't had as much use in that area, but the park is still there known as a park, served that neighborhood. If you move to the middle part, mountainside park is right below that area. That green area, corner up here, the green area in this area here is what we call mountainside park, and it's, the boundary is pretty much that triangle piece where you see the boundary, it's a natural boundary that goes around from the playground all the way circles around. That's considered the park. So that's mountainside park. Memorial Stadium is to the south of that. In Memorial Stadium, you can see where the outline track starts, and it ovals around, that whole playing area is considered Memorial Stadium. To the east, west of that, McCormick Field incorporates the area to that western bound all the way over to Bookmore Avenue. That's what we consider the McCormick Field site. And if you come south of that, where the area right here has right-of-way, that is what's called the grassy area park, let park neighborhood, future park. So then when we're discussing what areas they're parking in, this is what we consider the right-of-way. Currently, right now, it's listed as right-of-way. It's not maintained as a city park, it is in the right-of-way. And below that is the Oakhurst neighborhood. So you have two neighborhoods bounded by these facilities that's right in between the busy commercial intersection of Bookmore on the left. So just kind of give the layout. Any questions on the terminology? Because it kind of gets confusing with five different names for six different areas. Okay, so how we got here? Last year, when I mentioned to Council that the department would no longer do a wide, community-wide master plan, we focused in on neighborhood service plans. Out of that service plan, we looked at what are some of the key issues in each neighborhood? In the East End neighborhood service plan, the outlining issues was parking, events in the neighborhood, the impact, and also how do we manage community use versus rental use? And a lot of this stemmed from, in 2006 and 2007, Pack Square Park was under renovation out front. All those programs and events was moved over to Martin Luther King Park. It put a tremendous impact on the neighborhood. They had to live through that for three or four years of construction out front. One of the things that our department didn't handle well was, once we moved it over to Martin Luther King, we didn't cap it. More events was added. So if you can imagine, seven years after that, you had more events in that small area impacting the neighborhood, got to be a bigger issue at that time. So when the park reopened, some of the events wasn't allowed to move back because the park wasn't designed, some decisions with the stage wouldn't accommodate some of the uses. So at that time, Council decided to move a couple of the festivals up to mountainside, or Memorial Stadium, that's when we start having concerts and things like that up there. Up until that point, it was strictly for community program, program use. So with that increase in programming, also now you have residential development that's up there. So now you have more events, you have residential development, and we have tremendous parking issues where now people are parking in the park. Right-of-way, so any area that's available for parking, should use the parking, because there's just not enough parking to facilitate all of the programs and activities. The two largest impacts we have seasonal between April and August is the Asheville tourists, they have 70 games, and the Asheville Soccer Club, which is a rental, they request 23 days of use. So those are the two biggest users during this time period. And the reason they're the biggest users is because the tourists play seven home games, max minimum of three to four, so you're playing a seven-day stretch with 3,000 or 4,000 people in the neighborhood. And then Asheville City Soccer have 1,000, 2,000 right after that. So some days you may have nine, 10 days row, in a row with 2,000 or 3,000 people coming through these neighborhoods. So this is why it's grown over the last few years into an issue. So addressing that impact, so looking at how can we work to listen to the neighborhood, address their concerns that they've had for numerous of years, which is rightfully so, we should look at addressing those. One of the things we looked at was pedestrian access only to the mountainside park. So that keeps vehicles from traveling up Hunt Hill Road, coming through that small narrow strip of streets to access the backside of mountainside park. The other one was looking at the front open space in the right-of-way. Even though it's not designated as a park, the community identified in the master plan that they would like to see it as a park. So how can we start working to use the shared space to try to show that we are listening to the community and we are moving in that direction?
And that, again, that's the sort of circular area of grass at the mouth of Memorial Stadium. Yeah, right. We have some funky screen things happening. Is that, is that our issue or Dan's, maybe Dan's fixing it?
Dan?
It's the man behind the curtain. Oh, there we go.
Mayor, this area, I don't know, just that area right there, the right-of-way, that's the area you're speaking to now with the grassy area out front. So trying to preserve that in true nature of working with the community to be a future area that's some park area, and then maximizing parking with limited impact on the neighborhoods. And then securing alternate locations for the user groups that we have agreement with, that we know will be impacted during this time period when we are limiting access to those facilities. And then coming up with a draft event control parking plan, which Mr. Putnam will go over later, talking about what that looks like and how we're going to discuss that with the community on Thursday. So what we're hearing, we're hearing that there are some parking challenges, impact on neighborhoods, as I mentioned earlier, and also now there are some concerns with parking on the turf, that's one of the things that was mentioned, and restricted access to Memorial Field. This is some of the comments we've heard over the last few days. So what does it look like? So in order to balance out the using, uses of the facility, trying to, once again, show that shared space, the community want absolutely no parking in this area. One of the things that we worked with the tourists was to scale down the amount of area that they were using for their staff parking. So up at the top of the mountainside park, up in this area, that whole area was used for, that whole area right here was used for tourist parking. That's where, that's where the, this area right here was used for staff parking. This is where the tourist staff used for overflow. Wasn't used too much for the general public, but every game for 70 games in that park is where they parked their staff. So trying to work with them to say, okay, how can we work with the community and not have you park here, how can we reduce some of that?
So Rodrick, can you catch us up here? Because I have never received a single email about anyone complaining about tourist staff parking in the mountainside parking area. But obviously, there's been a conversation happening that just hasn't come to council on this issue. So tell me, so you were hearing from the community that they wanted, they didn't want the tourists to be parking in this area so that it'd be accessible to the general public to park, to access both Memorial and the playground that's up there?
No, the neighborhoods wanted to use it for open space and park. They felt it was a park, there shouldn't be cars parked in on the grass. So if they wanted to go walk their dogs, they want to have passive use, they weren't allowed to do that.
I see.
Unless a game wasn't being played. And when a game, a game was taking place, then the traffic would then impact, make mudslides and make it kind of unused.
So on this side of the park, the whole idea of moving the tourist staff from that area was to allow the neighborhood's general use and access to it.
And show good faith that we are listening to the concerns of the neighborhood and how can we address that with our users of our facilities to accommodate that.
And Rodrick, same type, was the general public using that as well for the tourist games?
Yes, we were using that for IR structure programs, using that back end for access to the field at that northern end.
Not for tourist games, you're talking about?
Not for tourist games, just for regular.
What I'm talking about is, I mean, before this, was there, was there parking, for folks who were going to tourist games, were they parking?
Overflowed, sometimes it was managed loosely, they would use it for their players, but if you drove up there, there was no one stopping you from getting in. And if you were already in, you're already there. That was a lot of it as well. So the concerns on parking on turf and then restricted access to Memorial Field. So one of the things that we also try to do is working with the tourists. They have historically parked 30, 40-plus, 50-plus cars in this area. Working with the neighborhood, saying, this is a right-of-way, we recognize this is a right-of-way. Yes, it looks like a park. So how can we, in the short term, work to move towards that as we go through the design process, moving with the renovation project? So kind of getting everyone to meet halfway was, let's limit the parking on this site. Once again, to show the neighbors that we do hear the impact that you're having, but also not remove all completely the parking from the tourists and handicap them from being able to have some parking spots. Where they're losing 30 here and then they're losing the other 60, 70, so in the grassy area up north. So they're losing parking on both sides. And this was one way for us to show the neighborhood good faith and work with the tourists, for them to work with us to say, okay, we can at least use this much parking. What does it look like in terms of control and access? So one of the issues we've had over the years is, during tourist games, the parking, the 172 slots that's available have been open all day for any use, for any public use. So when the tourists have ballgames, the parking lot's already full. So they could not remove cars out because they don't pay to park, so you couldn't tow cars. So there was a parking deficit. So one of the things that we looked at was, okay, if we could utilize this space for your event and we do not schedule any other major events during that time, so that this parking lot would be dedicated to McCormick Field during this time, vice versa, if we had a dedicated event at Memorial Stadium, we wouldn't have anything at McCormick Field, then the parking lot would be dedicated to McCormick Field, I mean, Memorial Stadium. And that could give each one of those facilities 172 spots for their event. So you're not sharing spots with two different major events. In order to make that happen, two things. One, groups that we, groups that use the facility provide programs on our behalf, we had to relocate them and find them other areas to offer the program on the days that they're affected by home games. And two, block off the parking lot so that we wouldn't have to go in and tow cars, which would not be a good thing to do. Once someone's already parked in there, we wouldn't have a ballgame, we wouldn't have to tow them. So if we block it off the night before, the parking lot is always secured, so when the tourist staff come in, they can already have access to it and start parking. Logistic-wise, it just made it a little easier to be able to do that. The public can still walk up and use the field before the game starts, they just can't drive the cars up there because it's hard to remove the cars out.
So the barricades would only, it's very hard to tell from this picture, but those barricades are blocking off where you have that white line on the left picture? Okay.
Yes.
So right at the tip of that right-of-way, before you enter the Memorial Stadium parking area is kind of how I look at that. So the barricades, they go the night before a game? So like, if a tourist game is in an evening, you're going to see those barricades up 24 hours before? So if the tourists are here, if they're home for a week, basically, those barricades will be up all week? And then who, who would manage? So the idea is to save all the parking behind the barricades for tourist games? For the staff of the tourists and for people attending the game, or?
Yes, for, for both, yes.
And so who stands there and manages the barricade? Who goes in and out?
They have a contracted service.
So someone with the tourists does it?
They've always historically used a contracted service company to manage barricades.
So if you want to go up there and play pickup soccer on Memorial Field, you got to park somewhere this side of the barricades and walk on up. And so we obviously have, it's an interesting conflict because the tourists play in the summer, and that's when a lot of people want to play soccer on the field in the summer. You know, do you, I guess I'm just curious, I mean, now looking at how this is shaken out, you know, it looks like we're trying to balance the interests of the neighborhood and their use of the other side of Memorial Stadium versus this issue and folks' use of Memorial Stadium.
Correct. Yes, and one of the impacts we looked at was on those nights, the groups that we have an agreement with, that we know they use it at this time of day, allocating facility space like UNCA, a rented space there for them, that accommodate their programs on those days that they'd be impacted.
And how many were those? Like, was it two groups, was it 10 groups?
There was six, six groups, seven groups that we accommodated. We tried to use some over at Vanceville, that project was working over there, and then also at Memorial Stadium. The groups that you're hearing from are not organized groups, they're, they're.
They're the pickup use.
And we have no idea of identifying individuals when they go up to do that. So that's where you're getting pushback from, is these groups that may have been planned for years, but we have not had an agreement or tried to facilitate that type of conversation with them to formalize them. Some of them just don't want to be formalized. So it's kind of hard to allocate space, but if we knew the group is using it, we could find other places for them.
Well, I mean, ironically, however, the use on the mountainside park side is, you know, that's a neighborhood general use, it's not scheduled a program. We don't have a contract or an agreement specifically with anyone who's using it. So I mean, to me, the, you know, you probably get more regional use of the field, right? It's not necessarily people that live in the neighborhood, they're driving over to play soccer with their friends or something like that. So it's a different.
Yes, it makes, because I think the soccer group that's using it is just a large group. It's a large group. You may have two or three individuals that go and do, you know, workout classes or some type of outdoor exercise, but this is a larger group with a larger voices.
Well, and I don't think it was just soccer, right? I mean, we heard from Ultimate, there were multiple people, I think, who were reaching out to us about using that field.
And the Ultimate group, we relocated them over to UNCA, provided.
You're talking about pickup Ultimate?
Yeah, pickup.
So the Ultimate program, and they may be individuals, but the Ultimate program that's identified as a group, we did work with them to accommodate any group that would be this.
Yeah, I mean, we've heard from people that say they go over there every single day at lunch and, you know, they've posted pictures and, wow, we got to watch them on the news last night as well.
If I understand this correctly, we're not stopping them from using the field. What we're stopping them from doing is parking. So it's not, we're not really stopping access to the.
But now, what, can you address the issue of the parking on the turf issue? Because that's been another, you know, in terms of use of the field.
Before, before we get there, I just want to, so, so if I, if I come from North Asheville to play pickup soccer on Memorial Stadium, and I reach these barricades, then where are my options about where to park? Because I can't park in mountainside park, right? And I can't park in the right-of-way, and then, I mean, I guess.
Well, there are parking spaces below the barricade. I mean, see all the cars parked right there in front of the barricades?
Yeah.
Those are, those are parking spaces.
Right, there's certainly some there. I guess where I'm going is, the parking lot that's down on McCormick Place, that is, is that public parking? Okay, but at some point, again, close to game time, somebody stands out there with, and you have to pay to park there, right? Or that's for?
No.
No? That, that parking lot that's right.
Parking on the street, parking on the street is.
No, not, I mean, on the street, I mean, on, well, you can't park on McCormick Place right there, but I don't think, well, you can up there. But the parking lot that's right below Memorial, right below McCormick Field, that is not.
Yeah, the tourists use that for their operations.
Right, so you, so you can't park there either. So there are few spaces there where those are, but then basically, you're talking about parking on the few spaces on McCormick Place or MLK. I mean, you're talking. about parking on the few spaces on McCormick Place or MLK. I mean, you're talking about parking a fairly far, a fair distance away to come play pickup soccer on Memorial Field. Okay.
Can I just jump in real quick to piggyback off of that and just say, for years, the tourists is all, Asheville tourist baseball has been a major attraction. Parking has always been an issue to where people park as far away as in, close to Nazareth First Baptist Church on Martin Luther King. That is a significant walk just to the tourist baseball game. So I guess what I'm getting at is, there's always been issues with parking. We've always known that there are issues with parking, not just because a group wants to play soccer or enjoy the the amenities there. On a night that tourist baseball, especially on a Thursday, Thursday, there's always going to be issues with parking. And so that's something that we've known, that's something that we've never really tried to address or had the means to address. And so I would just say that just keep in mind that issues with parking around the tourist baseball stadium is not something that's new. And for people to just go watch a tourist game, park nearly a mile away sometimes to to walk there. So that's, and that's, and I'm saying that to say, issues that people may have with parking, it's nothing new. And then, as the vice mayor stated, we're not telling folks they can't use the facility. Your parking is just going to be difficult, as it is difficult for tourists to serve, Asheville tourists to service their their patrons when they come to see their own game. So that's, that's an issue down the road that that may have to be addressed, or may not, I don't know. But at this juncture, it's, I'm just letting folks know that that parking is nothing new, parking issues.
But, but, Roderick, to the mayor's point, she asked a question, I have to say one of them here. There was some discussion about people actually parking on the field. Can you please, you address that?
Yes. So at the, the bottom of the field where they're, I wish I had a red pointer. The bottom of the field where this line is, right, can you see that? This is where the asphalt track and the restrooms are. The tourists with their staffing, because they didn't want to take away, use this just for staffing and push the community back into the neighborhoods. So they want to use this right here for their employee parking. So they start lining up cars along this asphalt all the way up here.
That is not where they were parked on Saturday. So is this a new plan? Okay, sorry. All right, I just want to make sure that that's what we're talking about. This is the new plan.
Roger, don't you have a slide that shows the?
Yeah, I don't know if we took that one, Krista. I don't know if that one was from this past one or the neighbors took it on that one. But we do have a slide with the pictures on it that make effort from that other angle, and I'll show it. But the the concept, Mayor, was for the the tourists to start lining up cars here and work their way, all the way up to the field. And if they needed to get on the field in order to keep from spilling over, I said that was okay, because the condition at the fields in, we're getting ready to place them next spring, it was, it was not, it was not going to do any more damage to the fields or impede any programs from using it. So for temporary use to get through construction, just through this baseball season, it was okay for them to park in this area here. And I will show you the slide that. So that's what it looks like. Mayor, I think that was what you were referring to.
Yeah, I, so I, you know, I took a peek up there on Saturday and there, no one was parked on the, you know, the paved circular area. They were lined up in basically what would be the end zone, just two carps deep there. And people were playing soccer on the field, they were able to use it. But I was, it was curious to me why they weren't just on the grass part, that's that half moon shape at the end instead. I mean, why they had to pull all the way onto the turf, but.
Yeah, so and I.
Because there was room there, but maybe they have an issue with turning around, I don't know.
Yeah, and and speaking with the tourist organization earlier, or Duane's on baseball earlier, they're going to try to use all of the hardscape first before just placing the cars on the turf to at least give them that room. And there was pickup games going on the first night, Thursday, during this trial run, to see how that worked. And there were soccer games going on, on the far end of the facility away from the cars. But they're, they're working through trying just to minimize how much of the turf area that they will utilize.
So, Roderick, have, I mean, so this is all for, so the the parking lot below Memorial Stadium and all of this parking on the field, that's all for the tourist staff on day, on game day? Is that right? That's what I'm hearing?
The the parking inside the stadium is for the staff. The parking below is for the general public.
So people going to the game?
Yes. Because they've never had designated parking before. And then, as.
The staff has not had designated parking?
Or 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 patrons. They've never been designated parking. And then, we allowed them to use that area for employees parking, but it's never been designated as employee parking. We just allowed it. So with this lease, we wanted to tighten it up, to actually have some language in it so that we can have a better conversation about where we allow them to park and not park. Because historically, we've just, they've just, it's kind of like the squatter. I mean, they're just, they've just used that spot. And going into renovating a new facility, I'm trying to get things in in conversations in line where we can hold accountable, saying, here's what you can and can't do, and it's not this handshake that was done fifteen, twenty years ago.
Right. I guess it, it seems to me like what we've done is, in trying to accommodate neighborhood concerns about the right of way and mountainside park, we have now, we have pushed that into Memorial Stadium and impacted people who use Memorial Stadium on a regular basis. And I, I mean, isn't, so the fact that people aren't allowed to park at mountainside park and in the right of way is is part of what's driving this, right?
The user groups that we're impacting are the non-structured. So it may be ten individuals, it may be two hundred, maybe, what we have, it's open park, so anyone can use it. The groups that we have a structured agreement and we know the dates and times, we have accommodated for them.
Right.
They're not at this location, but they have ample parking and ample time. They're not losing any time, any program time.
I guess I just wonder if in, I mean, we, we have shifted where the burden sits here and we've, it, I don't know. I, I wonder if we, if we have, if if that balance has gotten tilted too much, so that, again, in accommodating the neighborhoods and their desire to have these spaces not have cars, we're, we're now putting cars on on truly, I mean, it's all public land, but we're truly, we're putting cars on truly a public facility that people do use. I mean, I don't know if people pay, play pickup park or soccer on mountainside park. But, you know, we know that they play on Memorial, at Memorial Stadium. I don't know, it just, it the.
It's a difficult balance.
Strikes me the balance isn't quite right.
Because because community's saying, we want, we use the park and you have cars parked out here and it's a park, why do you have cars parked on? So that same, that same approach is what the neighborhood's been giving us for the last three years of, why are you allowing them to use that as a parking lot? We want to use it, this is open space, it needs to be public, we need to use it, we can't use it because you have cars on it. So it's the same, so we're, we're in a jam just trying to figure it out. And and the reason why we want to have this conversation now is because when the facility is renovated, there's not going to be any parking at all. So you, the only parking they have is a hundred and seventy-two spots, because the project is not giving us any new parking. So they're, 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 they're going to have to make adjustments. So if we try to accommodate and 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 not find a way to have share, share, win, win situations and everyone gives up a little bit, somebody's got to lose. I mean, you've, you've got to even say, we're not going to regulate parking during tourist games, it's a free-for-all, show up, first come, first served, you park where you want to park. And, or we're going to say, we're, you know, going to not limit the number of events, we're going to have multiple events going on at the same time. And the neighborhood's going to feel all this. So right now, it's kind of just long-term, what do we want to address? And from a policy decision to to say, here's how we're looking at the character of the neighborhoods, and user groups may come and go. The neighborhood's going to be there forever.
And I will say this on on behalf of the neighborhoods, I'll turn forty this year and ever since I was a kid, you know, people, I empathize with folks who who want to use the facilities of of Memorial Stadium. And again, they're not being stopped from using those facilities, it's just a parking issue that's causing them a headache. But you also have to look at the neighborhoods. The neighborhood makeup has changed, of course, but over the years, individuals in those, in those neighborhoods have had to deal with issues of parking from tourist baseball for many years, and to the point where, you know, I hear, I hear someone, you know, I hear you saying, you know, it's hard for us to get there to play soccer because we can't park. Imagine pulling up to your house and there's two cars already in the driveway and you got to park a quarter mile away from your house to get in. And that is the truth. That happens. It's in front of, in front of my house and other neighbors' houses, and it's happened for years. So I empathize with folks who have to walk a little bit to play soccer, but what about the the effects that neighborhoods, surrounding neighborhoods east end have had for years, where they've had to, you know, do the same thing and and not be able to 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 get into their own, own house. And so it's one of those, we do have to strike a balance, but we do, in my opinion, have to err on the side of caution with with neighborhoods, with with what those folks have to endure. Because over the years, those, some of those same folks on the different side of the, of the park over there have had to endure, hey, the tourist fans can park there, it's public, public street, and if they fill up your, right in front of your house and all the way up in the street and they're, they're there till ten, eleven at night, nothing you can do about it, can't have family over or whatever. I mean, that's how it is. And so those folks just have to eat that for years. And so I empathize with them, just as I do empathize with the folks who want to come play soccer, and it gives them a headache because they have to walk a little bit. But I'm just thinking about everybody.
So, you know, to be clear about what we're doing here tonight, this is under presentations because there's no council action. To, it is not typically the role of council to, to dip into Parks and Recs weeds, unintended. But we have been lately, you know, but you've sucked us into your, so, so this was sort of, the purpose of this is to provide information. Ultimately, you know, the manager is over the, all the departments, including Parks and Rec, and the, these are staff decisions. But because this had risen to such a level of, of concern within this neighborhood area that we thought we ought to take this opportunity to make this presentation. So I just want to give that context. One other thing I think, Roderick, might be helpful for the public to understand is, why is the city working to accommodate the tourists in particular when, you know, we wouldn't be in this situation at all if this were any, you know, private company or other group, but, but the fact that we actually own the tourist field and facility and we, that we, the city and Memorial Stadium, and we lease it to the tourists, so we have this special relationship with them, and we have components to that lease agreement that we're trying to meet, is my understanding of why the city is working to accommodate the tourist staffing parking concerns. If you, if you could just address that, just to, you know, just in case anyone sort of scratching their head going, why are we worried about the tourists here in this situation?
Yes, correct. When the agreement with the tourists was first implemented, oh, forty years ago, thirty years ago, we just reassigned it when the city took back over.
Right, it was once the county's.
Counties.
Thank you, county.
Correct. And and we, when the war agreement, when the war agreement was dissolved, the facility came back over for us to manage in two thousand and four. So we managed up until that point. Palace Sports in Detroit had the contract and they sold it. At that time, we were trying to get the contract more like a contract, more like a major league, minor league, city contract, not a handshake type of deal. Because as you can imagine, just the history of how that stadium has evolved, there was not a lot of stuff in place to to.
It wasn't on writing there.
Correct. So what we're trying to do is, is if we're allowing them to use a facility, saying, okay, let's give them dedicated spots where they can use so that they know for their business model, they have these spots to use and they can count on. Before, they had no spots to count on at all. And from a perspective of good business, if you're going to have a industry using a facility that's, that's managing, having some form of parking that they're guaranteed for their, their business model just makes sense. But how do we do that when the cows already left the barn, is what we're trying to get to now, is how do we formalize that so that, that when we negotiate with them, we can say, hey, clearly you have a hundred and seventy spots, and that's on the table, and it's not, oh, we can, we used to park over here, and then we can leave it to park down here. And one of the other things I'm looking at, working with the tourists, is overflow parking, like Stevensley and Public Works and some of the other city facilities. So in the future, if they may have the satellite and drive their, their employees in, and that's one thing they're looking at now. Because once again, once the facility is renovated, there's going to be no parking inside the facility at all.
Were you talking about Memorial?
Memorial Stadium.
Yeah.
So not even for the tourists. This year, we're doing it temporary for their staff to get through it. But once we renovate that brand new facility, there's no cars parked inside the facility at any time. So that's going to put burden on the user groups, putting burden on the tourists, putting burden on their, on special events. But we think that's, it just has to be set right. I mean, that's, you know, it, it is what it is. We're going to continue to have these, these issues of trying to balance out. And there's a lot of times you just can't have dual use in those spaces. And there's a lot of parking decks going up downtown. And there's been some conversation, well, there's an ample parking decks, people can use that. But it goes back to, you know, how do event organizers want to to tie that into, to, to, to the parking?
Roderick, I don't quite understand why the barricades must go up twenty-four hours prior to a game. And it seems like people don't show up a couple hours before the game. That seems to be doing it a little early.
Yeah. So so our experience with Belcher was when you try to go out and tow cars within a boundary after hours, car stays there all night, and then you wind up having to tow them, and then it gets a bad, it just gets to be a bad situation. So yes, we could allow cars in there and ask people to move, but the only way to get them out is to tow them. And we just don't want to get into that scenario of having to.
Well, I mean, what if the barricades went in noon the day of a game, something like that?
I mean, if there's cars in there, yes, we could do that, but it's just been problematic. So the, the easiest approach for us, the first start would, let's just barricade it.
I think what you're saying is that you're not going to get the, you're not going to get all the cars cleared out unless you do it twenty-four hours, is in your experience.
Correct.
So if you only do it a few hours before, there's going to be a bunch of cars still left in there, because people don't move their, not everybody leaves and goes to work every, you know, people are doing different things. So the cars are left in there and then they'll have to tow them out, which, boy, that would not.
I mean, what if, what if you, you know, what if somebody wanted to, they're going to the game and they decide to go early and they want to go walk up on Boat Catcher? I mean, they're going to the game, and I've heard you say that they're allowed then to park in that parking lot, but not if they get there before, an hour before the game or whenever the barricades, I mean, that, it just, yeah, it.
And the tourists have someone man, the tourists have someone manning the gate? The, the tourists have someone manning the gate. I mean, they may have someone there to, to show the ticket. I, I haven't looked into how they're managing that process of it, but I can check on that.
And what's the future plan for mountainside park and the right of way? Is it to improve them? Is it to leave them the way that is?
So mountainside, so mountainside park.
I'm sorry, mountainside park and the right of way?
Yeah.
That's what I meant to say. What's the future plan for that? So right now?
When you're talking about the mountainside park, that's on one side. The right of way is on.
No, I'm talking about both of them. Oh, I'm sorry. Because right now, we said no parking there anymore, but what's the plan?
The far right is, is mountainside. That's the interestway to mountainside park. There's a couple of issues we have in there. With the residential units that's right back up against the park, over the last two years, their residents have been parking in the park. The park closes at ten o'clock, you still have residential park, apartment users parking in the park as their own personal space. This first issue. The second issue we have is dumped, dumping solid waste. The, we have trash bins in there serving both facilities, and we have continued problems over the last three years with more and more debris and waste being dumped in there that we're having to pay for because the citizens are not taking them to, to, to the right spots. So two for, one, it helps us, one, eliminate impact and cars driving through the neighborhood. Two, cars parked in the park when it's not designed to be a supporting facility for the apartment complex. And two, citizens using it as a legal dumping ground. So those three areas we address, we're just making that one change. And you can still walk through there, we're just saying you can't drive through there.
So do we have plans, again, to improve that area, or are we just going to?
Yeah, it's going to be part of the overall plan.
It is part of the overall plan for Memorial Field. Okay.
All that's going to be green area and some facilities. And once we get to the design process, which we're trying to work, work towards.
So it will be useful as open space for people to play pickup soccer games or anything else?
Correct.
And then how about the right of way?
And and the right of way, the same. We're working with the community, and, and once we can get to the design decision, we will be able to to start having more formal conversations about what that looks like. Right now, it, it's going to be some type of open space, can't say how much, how little, just depends on once you look at the construction drawings and the, the site constraints, what's allowed and what's not allowed. If, we want to try to keep as much green space as we can. As downtown urbanized and we become densely populated, it's going to be hard to re reclaim green space. So we want to protect as much green space as we can while we're doing redevelopment and to, so as much as makes sense, we're going to try to keep as green space for that neighborhood.
We'll try to let you finish your presentation. I know there's a, there's a few people here that want to speak on this item, and we don't normally take speakers under presentations, but I think it's a little. but I think it's a little disjointed to wait till the end of the council meeting to have you speak on this item. So I do plan to allow folks to, um, speak on this item during this section of the agenda, but not till Roderica's done.
Yeah, the only piece now is for, um, Ken Putnam, Transportation Director, come up and talk about the, um, parking plan for large scale events, how that plays into it, that, uh, plays into it as we're going to scope the neighborhood on Thursday night.
It's no longer in slides mode or whatever, but you might want to.
While y'all are getting that together, I will say this. For, uh, for folks who get the enjoyment of Memorial Stadium, uh, to go play pickup soccer, uh, or whatever that you're doing, it's, um, that's a, that's a huge advantage. I remember, and I keep saying like I'm this old guy, I'm not, but I remember when I was a kid that we used to, I used to have to squeeze my little fat shelf between the gates because they would be locked because the kids in the neighborhood couldn't use the field. And we would sneak in to play football. Now that's not the case. We have, it's, it's open and everybody gets to use it, but I used to have to sneak in there to use it. So, uh, it's changed, so good.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ken Putnam. I'm the Transportation Department Director. The purpose of the traffic control parking plan that we're developing is to minimize the negative impacts on the neighborhood streets in the East End and Oakhurst neighborhoods. It will also serve as a baseline for all of the scheduled events. So this would be something that if, even if we had a new scheduled event, at a very minimum, this is what they would be shared with. This is what they would have to, they would have the parking available, available to them. They would also know what they would have to do to minimize the impacts. Uh, we've already mentioned that the onsite parking is very limited and right now it's right around a hundred and seventy-two spaces. Uh, the plan basically calls for no event parking on the neighborhood streets in the two neighborhoods that I mentioned, right adjacent to the facilities. And to help do, to accomplish that, we've identified four intersections that must be staffed by trained, uh, contracted security type, um, parking person at the, for example, the, the folks that the tourists use now. And we've also been told that the soccer club uses the same individuals. The advantage to that is they're always the same people with very little turnover and so they know how to do it once they get trained. Uh, what we plan to do and working with the communities themselves is we want to monitor the effectiveness of these intersections that are, uh, will be staffed to make sure that we try to minimize the on-street parking that might occur during the game on these streets. And then we will try to tweak and make changes for the future years, uh, based on the information that we receive back from the neighborhoods.
Ken, what are the identified neighborhoods?
It's the, uh, it's right to, right to the west, East End, it would be the, the two streets there, Hunt Hill and the one leading up from, uh, Martin Luther King into the complex. And then on the east.
Etchill.
Eastside, Oakhurst, it's all the streets that are between, we'll say St. Joseph Hospital and the ball field. White Fawn, Florence, Veronica is, well, that's where it begins is right there, Veronica.
Okay, any questions for Ken? Okay, um, so if you're here on this item and you want to speak, you don't have to speak, but if you're here, and remember, we're not voting on anything. So, but if you, if you want to speak, you can. Um, you'll need to raise your hand. I'll, when you come up to speak, state your name and you'll have three minutes and just watch the lights on the lectern. Uh, green means go, orange means you're about to stop and red in the beep means stop. And so please be mindful of that. So, yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
And you can pull that, no, do that, yeah, do that one, yeah.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Councilpeople. Thank you so much for having us here. My apologies for my attire. I found out very last minute that I would be coming by.
Yes, we did add this, so I'm sorry about that.
Is that me? I am here on behalf of Asheville Ultimate Club. We are a not-for-profit organized organization here in Asheville. I'm Anne Sittler. My apologies, on the Board of Directors of Asheville Ultimate Club. We are a non-for-profit organization that runs a youth league on Wednesdays at Memorial Stadium and adult league every Wednesday night at Memorial Stadium. In the summer times, we have Monday nights for both adult youth and beginners league at Memorial Stadium. And we also have pickup ultimate where we occasionally do free youth clinics on Sundays at Memorial Stadium. Um, we have been asked to forego all of our time at Memorial Stadium on Wednesday nights, not have the youth league run there or the adult league. The adult league is what funds the youth leagues. Um, we actually pay the coaches as part of the nonprofit to run those leagues. And we have been asked for over half of our nights this summer to be canceled or moved to other locations if possible. We have not been given solutions for every single night near, nearly every event that we have. So we are going to have to cancel nights of our adult league, of our youth league and of our clinics all summer long to accommodate parking for the Asheville tourists. And while I am a big supporter of the Asheville tourists, I love going to the games, I just don't feel that it's right to get rid of our space. That is a very organized space, like I said, run by a not-for-profit, this is not a pickup situation at all. We support over three hundred adults that take part in our adult league and over two hundred youth. Um, on top of that, we also do, like I mentioned, the free clinics. So we work with schools such as Montford North, Franklin School of Innovation, Rainbow Community Charter School, Evergreen Community Charter School, Francine Delaney and Asheville Middle. All students, um, and youth from those schools are supported by Asheville Ultimate Club and the money that we raise through our adult leagues to support the youth leagues at no cost. Um, and right now we are losing our opportunity to keep those leagues going this summer so that we can have parking at Memorial Stadium. I'm going to let Seth Gleason also take some of his time to talk on behalf of Asheville Ultimate Club as well.
Thank you for hearing us. Um, if I could address the three minutes, we do represent a large group. We're fairly organized as we can be. Um, and is that also available for the ten minutes when we represent larger groups?
You, so.
We're not going to take near that much.
You're, so you have to have three people here wave their time to you, but you're welcome to have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Uh, first of all, thanks to Park and Rec. We have a great relationship with them and they are probably in the worst position. It's a lot of mountainside and green space is hard to find. Uh, that's purpose for athletic facilities. And, uh, we've worked with Park and Rec for a long time and I know that we're one of the constituents. There's many others and it's a difficult balance. So first of all, thank you. And, uh, and, uh, give an example of some of the youth programs we try to run. And, uh, we are still working to coordinate this change. We want to keep our programming. And the point to be made for us is that our adult league, uh, is an adult recreational league, but it does have a trickle-down effect. And it helps us run beginner programs and youth programs. And so those will be affected as well during these changes. And, um, are, are there soccer people here? Okay, then they can speak for themselves. They have a huge program for a pickup soccer game, happens pretty much every day and there's a lot of participants in use. There's also lacrosse program that uses the fields at night and I would say lacrosse and ultimate are pretty organized and we self-organize so we can do a lot of youth outreach. Um, so we, we really do have, um, a lot of connections to the community. So, uh, we understand that the Memorial Park is going to be going through changes. It's going to be reworked next year. And Mountainside Park, right now, is pretty much, uh, a lot of ruts, mud and dirt. It is not a great park. And that's just because it has a ton of use for parking right now. And again, that's just a really hard balance to work with. So, um, if that's leaving next year, we just want to reiterate the question, um, that this is having a negative effect on us and it seems to prioritize tourists, the, the baseball team as well as people visiting. We understand how important that is to Asheville. Um, and I understand that the residents have a, have a very loud voice because they live there and they don't have another option. There's a lot of people using those facilities and it's affecting us as well. Um, excuse me. Uh, unlike Anne, I just came from work. If we look unprepared, it's only because this is short-term and we're doing our best. Uh, so we are organized as we can be. This affects a lot of our community. Um, and we're still going to continue to work with Park and Rec. Uh, SOC will have a lot of good things to say and you'll see a lot of voices and a lot of people really love Memorial. Uh, for that reason, it was recently re-turfed and I know the city put a lot of money into upgrading those athletic facilities. And if there's a few sticky points, it would be, uh, please don't park cars on the only place we can play, uh, our sports. Uh, you can park a car on a gravel lot, but we can't play ultimate and soccer on a gravel lot. So, um, thank you very much for taking some time to listen and, uh, hear some of our perspectives. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, this gentleman, yep.
Hi, everybody. Uh, I didn't know why I was coming tonight. I, I just wanted to get involved in the community and, um, really I just came to sit and listen, but you guys actually struck a topic that's very important to me. Um, I think public transportation and multimodal transportation in this community is really important.
State your name.
My name is Michael Strad, sorry. Um, my thought is like, well, how has this not come up during this, this conversation? We're talking about parking. We're talking about community. We're talking about letting people, um, you know, have a say. And we have, and, and like, uh, Mrs. Mayfield had mentioned, we're just moving a problem from one place to another just to accommodate cars. What, what's the process for, for getting better busing in town? Actually, I wanted to come here on the bus today and I got on the bus in, in Oakley, that's, that's where I live. And I got on the bus, I had, I had a nice app that was supposed to tell me, get on the bus and then make this change over Swan River. Uh, I've never ridden the bus before. Well, the connection was missed because the bus was two minutes late and the window of opportunity was two minutes. So I'm standing there in a, in a nice suit and I'm thinking, what if I was trying to go to a job interview? I had to call an Uber, spend ten dollars to get here on time. And at no point have we talked about the idea of getting some buses in here or getting better buses. Nobody rides the buses because they only come once every hour. How do you rely on that? So anyway, I think, I think the buses, and I'm not trying to tell you how to do your jobs, um, but I think if we, if we kind of focus on, on that issue, we're hitting two birds with one still here. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thanks. Yes, in the back. You guys decide.
Hello, my name is Jesse Frye and I'm here to represent the soccer community and I'm here with Sterling as well.
Yep, I'm Sterling Barlow.
So we, we understand the challenges that are in front of us. And there's more than two thousand recreational soccer players that are participating in the pickup. Now that's not on a regular basis. We probably have anywhere from forty to sixty people. Sometimes we have so many people, we actually have to play both sides of the field. So our issue is very similar to ultimate is we would just, you know, ask for respect that the fields that we play on, whenever they are open to the public, that there's no vehicles being parked on those. We also have a semi-pro soccer team that plays on that same space and that field has been terrible for years. And I mean, we've had multiple people that have, um, injured, you know, ankles. I actually have an ankle sprain myself right now. Um, so I think that's one of the biggest issues. Many times because we are pickup and we're not necessarily an organized sport, we're, we have to go other places. We go to Buncombe County Sports Park and play on Field Eight because ABYSA and ABSA, you know, they, they don't allow us to play on those fields because we need to retain them for those sports leagues. Uh, we can also sometimes play on JBL, um, so on early mornings or weekends, particularly on Saturdays, we'll have to go down there when there's other events being held at, um, at Memorial. So we're pretty flexible in our, our desire to play a game that we really love. And, um, it's also a great place for, um, inner-city youth to come in during the week, or during the, uh, weekends and during the day in the middle of the summer, which many of them don't have transportation to actually come to the field. So we really try to encourage an, uh, open environment where people that may not have busing to go to JBL. So when we go from Memorial where we might have sixty, seventy people on a weekend, if we have to go to JBL or Candler, the numbers dwindle drastically. So having a, a space in the city where we can actually walk to from our work in the middle of the day, um, many people work in the brewing industry, uh, many people work and live in the area and walk to those spaces. So having the ability to park during the day, our games are from twelve-thirty to two. We're not playing into the, into the time when, you know, the tourists are playing their games. Many times we're gone before two o'clock. So I guess what we're asking is just to respect the fact that this is a public space. We want to use it. We try to respect it. We pick up after ourselves when there's trash in the field.
And, um, to add, I live at forty-five Buchanan Avenue at the bottom of the hill. I hate microphones, sorry. And, um, what I've seen happen is they're limiting use of the field whether they admit to it or not. And so like my son's lacrosse league has not been able to go up there. They don't, they can't have any practices up there. The men's, uh, lacrosse league has not been able to have their season up there. And, um, basically the, the tourists in the beginning, when they put this into action with no guidelines, they were limiting us from going up there to walk our, our pets even. So we've, we have seen them actually limiting use of the field. Um, they said, uh, that they, they were limiting use of the field to keep the cars from being damaged, especially the ones parking up on the turf. And now that that, that the cars are pulled back, I don't see why we can't have full use of the facilities. And I also don't understand why six other groups are being displaced for programming. I don't understand that at all. My son's, uh, lacrosse, like I said, the men's lacrosse, um, uh, flag football, they have a pickup league, Asheville Soccer Pickup League, um, ultimate, ultimates pickup league, and then pretty much anybody else that wants to go out there, we're limited to this very tiny space because they don't want people playing where they can damage cars. Um, it, I, as a resident of the neighborhood, uh, the parking, you were talking about the pictures, I wish I could pull them up for you. You were talking about being able to park below the barriers, just so you know. Those barriers are up at seven in the morning. That picture I took that he used was at seven in the morning. So by noon, when we get there, every single space is full with tourist management parking. Later in the day, they take their cars and they move up the hill. But until then, they use all the parking down at the bottom. So the residents there are limited to their own, you know, areas. And then anybody that wants to visit the field, it's not just a walk. It's a, it's a, you have to find somewhere down in the city to park. Um, are we sharing our three minutes? Cause I got other things.
You, you have your own three minutes.
So, um, going on with that, so when we're talking about parking too, he said it's a lunchtime thing. And I know Keith has said, uh, people need to walk a little bit to get up to the field. Yes, you're right. You know, it doesn't hurt anything, but a lot of the times, people are going on their lunch break. So they have to be able to get to and from the field. There's not a shower facility or anything. It's something they're trying to do in a quick time. Um, and finally, I do think it's really sad that we're seeing public land, something we've all enjoyed, going to a private entity, for them to be able to park when this is actually a sports facility. It's not a parking lot. And the programming, this, the four nights a week, seventy days out of the summer, that the programming is being displaced, we're losing.
Thank you.
Losing that.
Thank you for your time.
Just as a correction, I didn't say people need to walk. I said people have had to walk.
Correct.
Including me.
Is there anyone else here who wants to speak on this item? Yes, sir. And then.
Hey, my name is Jonathan Wayne Scott. It just, it seems like we're trying to ask too much of our public land and that it seems problematic that, you know, we, we leased this to the tourists for a specific reason. Now we're trying to get the use of the baseball, you know, function in our community, that we have a minor league baseball team here and maintain this as a, you know, public property. You know, it's like having your cake and eating it too. There's just only so much that you can do. Um, and I'm a little confused as to why we don't understand the impact of the tourists' staff parking when we're leasing to that essential, you know, that company. We're the landlords and we're the, the owners and we're kind of, don't understand what kind of impact that activity has on it. I think that we probably have to make some hard choices. I mean, I played soccer when I was a kid. My, uh, kids loved playing it. Um, I think that baseball is a better multicultural fit for the East End community. And baseball is the most multicultural sport that there is, I believe. And, uh, you know, I don't know what this says about, uh, you know, lacrosse and ultimate frisbee and soccer in the, you know, historically black neighborhood of the East End. This is sort of a, this is what gentrification looks like. I mean, I know this is public land, this is for, you know, the use of the people who live here. The people who live here are having more and more interests in things that are not, you know, the same as the East End community. And I think that we should probably just limit what goes on there to the tourists. We should have charged them a reasonable rate and I know. there to the tourists. We should have charged them a reasonable rate, and I know that, you know, minor league teams get a free place to play, that's the standard protocol. We could have had the TDA reimburse their rent, you know, so we could have made something off of this. But it's like, it's confusing, you know? We rented this to the tourists for a dollar a year and gave them all of the equipment to maintain all of this stuff. And it's, you know, it just, there's not a real sensible business plan around any of this. So I just want to, you know, consider it maybe through an equity lens as well, you know, what impacts the community at large by trying to please everybody and give everybody a place to play, you know? I mean, maybe we don't have room for frisbee in the middle of town. We don't have enough room for soccer, because the other soccer field is being flooded. You know, we got a problem with that. We live in a mountainous area, we only have so much flat space. We can't make everybody happy all the time. And we're just running out. I mean, and the more people that we stuff in here, the more people we're trying to please, and making that problem that's impossible even, you know, greater. I mean, I feel for you guys to try to have to balance this stuff out. Good luck with all of that.
Thanks, gentlemen. The gentleman back there.
Good evening, council. Thank you. I didn't actually either come to speak tonight about this particular issue, but I am a Nashville native. I do enjoy going to the tourist stadium. I've played pickup soccer and ultimate here. I have friends that live in the neighborhood and have friends that work for the tourists. I'm a little confused about who the beneficiary is here of blocking these spaces off. It seems to me like the only people who are really going to have an advantage is the staff for the tourists, so they don't have to walk quite so far themselves. Blocking these streets off is going to cause any of the parking that could have been used there for any of these other facilities to be pushed into these neighborhoods. Blocking off the grassy area, I can see the benefit of not having tire tracks and it being all torn up for the neighbors when it's not being used for parking. But I was there the other day, there were three people down there walking their dogs while the tourists were in session. Seems to be a decision that's already made, since there's stones there. This is a difficult issue for you guys. I understand that. We, parking in Nashville in general, has been a problem, and as it grows, has continued to be more of a problem. I can remember being able to come downtown and park anywhere, anytime you wanted to. But I am just confused about who is really pushing this issue. Blocking the whole place off for a select few doesn't seem to me to be the right thing to do. Thank you guys for your time. I know that this has probably gone on longer than you meant it to. Probably most council meetings do, but...
My name's Ian Maruys. I'm actually here with these young, fine young men in this Boy Scout troop, so you guys have a view.
Anybody else? Okay, so that was one of our longer presentations. So, you know, just based on the comments I heard, there's still a lot of confusion about what's going on here. And I think, you know, what I heard is that when we do communications on this, probably going to need to use, continue to use some kind of map or something, because, so if I understand what's going on here correctly, the mountainside park is not accessible to vehicles so that the neighborhood can use it. People are walking their dogs there. That is on the north side of Memorial Stadium. On the south side, we have the issue of the barricades that will block off parking, and the tourist staff will use the, as I hear it tonight, they're going to park up on the Memorial Stadium area, but not on the turf unless absolutely necessary. And if they're on the turf, they're going to be in what's essentially the end zone. I went up there myself on Saturday. I saw the tourists were parked on the turf, but the whole field was being used for a pickup soccer game at the time. So the other confusing bit I heard here is that the field, if it's available, people can still get up there and play pickup soccer, pickup ultimate frisbee, pickup lacrosse, whatever. But there are certain groups that we actually have arrangements with that have been asked to not use the facility during certain times throughout this tourist season. And we heard from ultimate frisbee, who has a formal arrangement, and I think soccer has a formal arrangement. So, I mean, one outstanding question, after all of this is much clearer for me, but one outstanding question I would have is, you know, if the tourists can manage to park their cars essentially in the end zone or beyond, if the organizations that we have agreements with don't mind putting up with it, why couldn't they still use the field during a game night? You know?
They just wouldn't have parking.
They just wouldn't have parking. But why don't, why wouldn't we allow them to use the field if no one's, you know, essentially on the playing portion of the field during game days and nights? And I don't know if you know the answer to that rhetoric right now, if that was looked at, or if that's an adjustment we could consider. Or, again, we're not the decision makers. We do like to meddle and micromanage, and then we have to be restrained from doing that, but so on.
Yes, and maybe we didn't clearly state that. The facility is not closed to people to use. We just are not structuring activities or sending activities.
Well, and I'm asking, why not? Why couldn't we do that?
Well, so for us, if we had a program where parents are coming, you want to have ample parking for those structured programs. So if a ultimate frisbee, for instance, have the kids league at 3:00 and then have an adult at 5:00, we want them to be able to have access to the facility.
I see what you're saying. So if they're getting picked up by parents and...
Correct. So with them, we've found alternative locations where they can have the same setup, they're just not at Mountainside Park. So you have the same setup at UNCA. So the only thing is, if a group wants to go up and have a pickup game, we're not stopping it. We're not saying you can. And that's why the other night, they're up there playing soccer during the day, the tourists...
They just aren't guaranteed a space if they, you know?
There isn't parking necessarily.
Well, and they're not, you know, somebody else might be already...
It'll be shared space. You won't have the whole facility, because every car's parked on one end of it. But we've not excluded, and that was one of the reasons why we left it open, because people want to walk through a park. We're not saying you can't come in here.
And we haven't said, I mean, we haven't, they can use the whole field. So, or are they blocking off like a quarter of the field so that balls don't go into the car?
Correct, yes.
So we are blocking off some of the field, even if cars are not parked on it?
Yes. On the far end, that's where the cars are parked. The soccer group was running the games the other way. So it was less impactful, or less probability that the ball would come. They weren't kicking the balls towards the cars. So they were coexisting. And we've never said that can't happen. It was just, we just don't want to have to run cars out when it's time to get to the game call. But for our structured programs, we really feel it's a better experience to relocate those to a different site, so that their experience is whole, just on those seven nights during the season that they have.
Mayor, if I could. I know that this particular subject matter lasted way longer than we anticipated. However, we thought it was extremely important for us to try to come and clarify that, quite frankly, this space is really oversubscribed. And we are trying our best, from a staff perspective, and even working with the community, and working with our formal partners, to try to manage this space and respond to the numerous issues, competing issues, that we have heard out in the community. We are not by any means saying that we, this is a perfect solution. We are saying we are almost muddling through. We will go back. We will, we've heard some of the concerns that have been raised. We will try to make minor adjustments. But again, we just want you all to know the complexity of this issue. We cannot win. Someone will either be displaced or inconvenienced, because we only have this amount of space to work with. The official park is Mountainside Park. The bottom half of that screen is right-of-way. It is not a park. We're trying not to have parking in the park, which is Mountainside, and parking on the right-of-way. I will leave you with that. Thank you.
I mean, it does seem to me if Mountainside Park is going to get programmed into the big over, the big redo of Memorial Stadium, that for a year, for the next year, I mean, if it's open space, and it's, anyway, that, I'll say again, it seems like we're shifting the burden of cars from that space onto and into the field, which is shifting it from completely unprogrammed, unkempt space to really useful space. But that is not a shift that makes sense to me, but I realize that's not my job. But, anyway. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our really long, abnormally long presentation and report section of our agenda. We have one public hearing item on our agenda. Jessica Bernstein is here to talk to us about that. It is a public hearing to consider conditional zoning on property located at 3 Avon Road from Community Business One District to Community Business One Conditional Zone for the construction of a new Buncombe County East Asheville Library Branch Building. And we'll give everyone just a moment to shuffle around. Uh-oh, we've even tuckered out the Boy Scouts.
We've even scared the Boy Scouts away.
Okay. They're probably hungry for dinner.
All right. Thanks, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. As was stated, this is a conditional zoning request for the new East Asheville Library Branch Building. The project site shown here on the exhibit map consists of a portion of a parcel. The larger parcel is identified with frontage on Tunnel Road, as well as Lindstone Court and Avon Road. The conditional zoning is only being applied to about a 1.8 acre portion to the rear of the site. And so the whole site is zoned CB1. It's on Tunnel Road. There's CB1 zoning, highway business, and residential zoning in the vicinity. On the aerial, you can see this is the site of Fire Station Number Eight, up at the front of the parcel, and then behind it is the existing library building. The proposal is to demolish the existing library and community center buildings, shown here on the demolition plan. This portion in the pink is under the conditional zoning, and the blue is removed from that. So the parking and building will be removed, and then the new structure is proposed here at the rear of the site. It'll be a single story, about maximum of 15,000 square feet, as noted in the staff report. The vehicular access to the site remains in essentially the same location. Right now, there's a driveway from Avon and a driveway from Lindstone Court, and they don't connect in the middle. With this proposal, that would go all the way through. There'd be 50 parking spaces to serve the library. The landscaping that's required by code is all provided on the site and detailed in the staff report. There's an existing sidewalk along Avon Road. There's not one currently on Lindstone, but the applicant will be installing that sidewalk along the full length of that parcel frontage. There's also existing sidewalk on Tunnel Road. The project complies with open space. There's the basketball courts that are currently on the site. Those will remain in the location where they are. They'll be resurfaced. The playground that's there right now will be removed. That's kind of the footprint of where the building will be, but they will be putting in a new playground on a different area of that site. There's a couple of conditions that go along with this project, and those were detailed in the staff report. One is that in Community Business One zoning, which this is, and we're, the applicant's requesting to rezone it to Community Business One CZ, which is, we don't, we typically rezone to a different zoning district, but Community Business One really fits the best with this use. And so that's staying in place. But the CB1 zoning district restricts the size of the building and the size of the footprint. So that's one of the main conditions for this, to have a larger-sized building at a single story. And that was really, came out of numerous public meetings with all of the users of the site, designing for the facility, what makes the best layout for this kind of library use. So that's a condition that staff's very supportive of. There's a couple of other technical conditions. The parking is closer to the street than the edge of the structure in one location, and that's to maintain that existing basketball and playground use on that side. A couple details about channelized storage in the parking lot, and a bit of grading within a portion of the landscape buffer. Those are all detailed in the report. There's also an additional condition that came out of the Technical Review Committee discussions, and the applicant has agreed to staff's suggestion or recommendation, and that's for an enhanced pedestrian crossing at Tunnel Road. And that will really greatly help with safety and connectivity in the area. So we're very appreciative of that. The applicant held the required neighborhood meetings, many public meetings. The project was approved with conditions by the TRC in February. They received a unanimous recommendation of approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission in March, and made a presentation to the city's Recreation Board in March as well. Staff is supportive of this request and those conditions. The community-based use is on the site already. This proposal makes upgrades to that building, upgrades to the access, upgrades to connectivity. It really seems to be aligned with the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan, and the future land use map, and the city's goals and objectives. So while the building is much larger than what's allowed in Community Business One, quite supportive of it. And that concludes my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? No? Okay, does the applicant, aka Buncombe County, want to speak?
Hi, my name is Maggie DeLapp. I'm the project architect for the East Asheville Library with PFA Architects. I just wanted to add a couple comments on our process to what Jessica has presented to you. And as you might know, the East Asheville Library is one of the most heavily-used branches in the Buncombe County system, and the community, the East Asheville community, has been heavily involved throughout this entire design process. As Jessica mentioned, there have been several public community meetings, and with the most recent being last month, to discuss with the community what they would like to see in the new playground area located on the project site. There are also a number of design meetings that took place with the library's advisory board, and they really helped us reach a design that would fit in with East Asheville and best serve their community. So we feel and the community supports the claim that a one-story building of this size is truly the ideal form to economically build and operate, and is the best way to serve this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak from the applicant? No? All right, I'm looking. No. Okay. This is actually very exciting, partnership, actually. And I had the good fortune to be able to attend some of the earlier community meetings, and walk this whole property, and it's exciting that you're going to save the trees, those beautiful enormous trees that are out there closer to the tunnel roadside. That was quite the conundrum. Okay, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? You have three minutes. State your name. Anybody? Just, yes, sir. You can, you need to come forward to the microphone, and please state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Shane McCarthy, and I grew up in East Asheville, and I grew up going to that library, the park, and basketball court. I'm super excited to see this getting upgraded, especially when you said there was a resurfacing of the court. I'd be very happy. Full support, please do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? As the daughter of a librarian, this is a warms-my-heart moment. All right, do I have a motion?
I move to recommend approval of the conditional zoning request for the East Asheville Library from Community Business CB1 to Community Business One Conditional Zone for the construction of a new library building. And site upgrades, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and aligns with the city's comprehensive plan in the following ways. One, this is an improvement to existing uses in place. Two, the existing zoning and future land use category in place are appropriate and supportive of these community-based uses. Three, upgrades to parking and landscaping will enhance the site. And four, the proposal is aligned with strategies found in the city's comprehensive plan regarding... And four, the proposal is aligned with strategies found in the city's comprehensive plan regarding activating the pedestrian experience, citing uses along corridors that are supported by transit, providing spaces available to all members of the community, and upgrading community facilities to serve a growing city population.
That's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, that concludes our public hearings agenda, but the first item of new business, Item A, is related to this project. So, we're going to hear from Nikki Reed on a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a ground lease with Buncombe County for the East Asheville Library located on city-owned property at 902 Tunnel Road.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nikki Reed, and I'm the city's Real Estate Program Director, and so tonight, I'm here to present a resolution for a long-term ground lease for the city property here at 902 Tunnel Road to be leased to Buncombe County for the new East Asheville Library. So, the subject property is about 2.76 acres in size, and there are several existing uses on the site, including the city's Fire Station Number Eight, as well as a former recreation center that is currently occupied by LEAF, a local nonprofit, for their offices. There's also a playground and basketball courts, and of course, the existing East Asheville Library and associated parking. So, the county has come forward with a lease proposal of 1.8 acres of the site to build a new library facility in the northwestern area of the property. As Jessica mentioned, the existing playground will be replaced onsite, and the basketball courts would be resurfaced as part of the overall improvements, and the existing library and recreation center would be demolished. So, the proposed lease line would run along the back of the fire station. The new parking that would be created within the footprint of the demolished buildings actually provide a buffer between the fire station use and the library use, and the city would retain control of the fire station and roughly an acre of property there along the frontage, leaving room for any future expansion of the fire station. And of course, the fire station will continue to operate out of that location during construction. So, the county has requested a 99-year ground lease at $1 per year, and will take on the maintenance of the grounds and improvements within the lease area, including library, basketball courts, and the playground and parking area. One note on timing. The city's agreement with LEAF, who occupies the recreation center, ends in June, and LEAF has requested an additional month in order to transition into their new space that they have at the Del Carta Building, at the Eagle Marketplace Building downtown, and so, we are going to be working with Buncombe County so that their lease commences late summer, and will ensure that smooth transition as LEAF relocates and county starts construction. So, overall, we see these improvements as a great benefit to the public, and the lease will strengthen the partnership with the city and county, and staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Nikki, I have a question. What, did we consider selling that part of, that parcel to the county? Not the fire station parcel, but the rest of it?
We did not. We actually thought the lease was a good mechanism to show that partnership and really to allow for an ongoing partnership, so.
Nikki, a quick question. In terms of, this may be sort of a stupid question, but in terms of the legal documents, whatever, we're going to have this ground lease. I assume that the requirement's going to be that we have a library on this lease over this entire time period as well? That's going to be sort of conditioned on?
The conditional zoning, from what I understand, actually governs the use, so any changes to that use would have to go for another conditional zoning. Look back at Janice for the nod there, but yes.
Thank you. So, I guess the question is, it'll be a library unless the conditional zoning changes?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions? Okay, do, do I have a motion to, on this item, and then I'll take any public comment if there's, if there is any.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a ground lease with Buncombe County for the East Asheville Library.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our next item, and thank you very much, Buncombe County and the related groups, for attending. Yes, and you've learned more than you ever wanted to, but.
Parking at Memorial Stadium.
The next item on our agenda is the ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2019, 2020 fees and charges. Just as a matter of process, I don't know if Tony's going to get into this, but we do the fees and charges before we do the manager's budget is presented, since the manager really needs to know where we are in fees and charges before she puts together her budget.
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, Tony McDowell from the Finance Department, and we do it for that very reason, and also to go ahead and adopt the fees now. It allows us to communicate out to our citizens and our customers about what the rate increases are going to look like come July 1st of this year. So, as the mayor mentioned, the item before you tonight is adoption of the ordinance amending the fees and charges manual for fiscal year 1920. It's one of the first things we bring to you each year as part of the budget process. Staff begins reviewing fees in December. We look at things such as, what is the desired level of cost recovery for a particular service that we're providing? Typically, we do that analysis in-house. Occasionally, we have outside consultants come in. If you all may remember, we've had folks help us with our DSD fees and our parks and recreation fees over the last couple of years, and we've made adjustments in prior years based off of those studies. We also look at market rates and what other cities are charging for the services that we're providing, and compare our rates to those. And then, we also look at financial models we have, may have in place. So, for example, in our enterprise funds, our Water Resources Fund and our Stormwater Fund, both have multi-year financial projections, forecasts, that include incremental rate and just, rate adjustments over time. And so, we evaluate all of that, and then we bring you all a package of fees to consider in the spring. The first stop is at the Finance and Human Resources Committee, and we took the fee package there on March 26th, and the committee recommended bringing it to the full council. So, I'll just briefly summarize some of the fees in the packet tonight. And our general fund, which is our biggest operating fund for the city, there's only a handful of very modest changes proposed. There's actually a reduction in fees proposed to our 14 Riverside Drive facility to encourage greater usage of that facility. There's also a technology fee that's being proposed in the Fire Department that will help them out with some of their issues with inspections, and doing that in more, in a more timely and efficient manner. And then, again, only a minor set of adjustments in the general fund that will produce about $30,000 in revenue next fiscal year. In our enterprise funds, as I mentioned, we have been for the last several years doing incremental increases in our water and stormwater funds. This year, we're proposing continuation of those increases. In the water fund, that would be a 2% increase on single-family residential rates, and then in the stormwater fund, it would be a 5% increase, both in the residential and commercial rates. The overall impact, as you all saw earlier in the budget work session, for the typical household, the typical residential household in Asheville would be about $8.40 in terms of cost increase annually, or about $70 a month for those water and stormwater fee If you all have any specific questions, I will try to answer those. There's also staff from the departments here to help out as well.
Does anyone have any questions?
So, Tony, just to make sure, when you, I'm not sure if I misheard you, the monthly impact is 70 cents a month, right?
Correct.
Okay, I thought you said 70 dollars.
Did I say 70 dollars?
Yeah, I think, yeah, so, let's just make that clear. It's $8.40 for the typical, annual impact for a typical single-family household, and the monthly impact of that would be 70 cents.
Correct. Yes, yes. Sorry about that.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. I need a motion on this item, and then I can take any public comment.
I move to approve an ordinance amending the fees and charges manual for fiscal year 2020. Excuse me, I'm messing up. Let me start again. I move to approve an ordinance amending the fees and charges manual for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll have three minutes, and state your name. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Mass exodus by staff. Now, we have another, let's see, a resolution amending Asheville Standards, Specifications and Details Manual adding microcell technology and aesthetic standards. Shannon Tuck is here to tell us what that is.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The city maintains a technical manual that's a compilation of construction standards and construction details, and from time to time, that manual is updated to reflect current construction practices and standards, as well as to add standards for new technology. Staff is actually working currently on a large update to that manual, but for reasons that I'll explain in a moment, this particular amendment had to come to you in advance of that larger update. So, in 2017, the North Carolina General Assembly passed Session Law 159 that was designed to aid in the deployment of new small wireless facilities. What this law did was to essentially grant the broad use of, or access to above-ground utility infrastructure. This is most commonly going to be streetlights and your typical wooden utility pole. And what this does is it provides access to that infrastructure for the purpose of co-locating small wireless technologies. So, this is probably going to be most commonly recognized as like those equipment cabinets, antenna meters, cabling wiring, that sort of thing, that will be attached or affixed to those utility structures. The law also allows for the installation of new poles where existing infrastructure isn't available, but there are some limits on height and spacing requirements. This law also strictly limits what a municipality may regulate when it comes to the technology, and limits the fees, and establishes a shot clock for new applications. Additionally, the FCC issued an order that established a deadline by which cities had to adopt standards if they were going to do so, and that deadline is April 15th, 2019. So, this amendment, if adopted, will establish a new Section 11 titled Small Wireless Facilities as part of the City, City of Asheville Standards, Specifications and Details Manual. This new section would provide the necessary development and design criteria for those wireless facility providers. And just before this item, council adopted the updated fees and charges for fiscal year 20, and that included the establishment of a new fee for these particular applications. Be happy to answer any questions. There's other staff also available, depending on the question.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, motion, please.
I move to adopt a resolution regarding, start again. I move to adopt the resolution amending the City of Asheville Standards, Specifications and Details Manual to add a new Section 11, Small Wireless Facilities, with said section establishing new standards and details for installation of small wireless facilities attached to public utility infrastructure, as well as the establishment of new poles for the purposes of supporting these facilities.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the final portion of our printed agenda, I will hand over to the Vice Mayor. Boards and Commissions.
Thank you. So, we no longer have to re-advertise for the Citizen Police Advisory Committee vacancy from, from a housing authority resident. We, the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends Sandy Aldridge to fulfill that vacancy. I have a motion and a second from Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yay. Makes me very happy. We've, that's been out for a long time. For the Public Art and Cultural Commission, the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends Jasmine Washington for the vacancy.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Tree Commission, the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends Patrick Gilbert.
Okay.
And I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it. For Boards and Commissions.
Okay, I have a number of people that have signed up to speak under public comment. I'm going to call those names. Folks, this is the portion of the agenda where you need to state your name. You'll have three minutes to speak, and we ask that you speak on items that were not on the printed agenda. If you didn't sign up to speak, I'll get to you after I get to the signups. The first person who signed up to speak is Chris Castro.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Chris Castro. I'm a Lieutenant Colonel in the North Carolina Army National Guard. I'm here to talk to you briefly tonight about the Selective Service System. What I am is a, what they call a traditional guard member. I drill two days a month and 15 days in the summer. The Selective Service System is the draft board in Washington DC. They have a partnership nationwide with the National Guard, and they use National Guard officers to promote their activities. The board is, rather, the Selective Service System is there in case of a national emergency. What most people are not aware of is that every county in North Carolina has a five-person local board of citizen volunteers, and these are the folks that would, in case a draft ever were to be reinstated, this local board would make decisions about community members, and the local board would decide who would get a deferment, a postponement, or even an exemption for military service in case a draft ever were to be reinstated. And in my partnership with the Selective Service, what my job as a guard officer is to do is to recruit and train volunteers for these local boards. In Buncombe County, I currently have two vacancies for local board members, and my presentation, I should have mentioned it started, is also geared for members of the community at large as well. And what I'm asking the city council, just to wait, I'm here to raise some awareness, but also to get some assistance, if I may, that if you know of anybody that might be interested in being a volunteer. It's pretty simple. The requirements are only that you be 18 years of age and reside in Buncombe County. You cannot be a member of law enforcement, and you cannot be in a prosecutorial role in the court system. Other than that, the vacancies are open to anybody, and we encourage a diverse makeup of people on our boards. And like I say, I have two vacancies currently. One thing about the position is it's appointed by the governor of the state of North Carolina, so you get, that person gets a nice certificate saying you're a member of the local board. And the other great thing about the job is, since there is no draft currently, you really have no job function. So, we put you on a board, you get a nice certificate from the governor, and you don't really have anything to do. I will leave some brochures, so if anybody's interested, I'm going to leave some brochures with Ms. Burleson.
This, I was going to say Brian.
He's signing up. That has a board member information book, and also a pamphlet about the duties, and has my business card with my name, address, and email. And if anybody's interested, I'd love to have some input, so please feel free to give me a call or shoot me an email.
Thank you.
Depending on your questions, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. The next person I have signed up to speak is Deanna Williams.
Right. I'm Deanna Williams, and my dress is no disrespect to anybody, but I work with the homeless population, or our citizens experiencing homelessness, and I dress to make them feel comfortable. So, Mayor, Vice Mayor, chairpersons, I, first, I wanted to thank you for your service, and I imagine that the decisions that you have to make with the limited funds that you have are quite difficult. I attended on March 29th the subcommittee meeting where Keith Young and Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Mayfield was on the phone, and we're making those hard decisions about how to allocate money to all of the wonderful nonprofits that we have in our organization. And so, I wanted to take this opportunity to make you aware of a funding opportunity that we have through HUD Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program Grant. This would be to benefit our unaccompanied homeless youth, and that's using the federal definition of unaccompanied, and youth being under 25 years old, and not with a parent or guardian. They can be a supportive role model for them, and also provide them guidance and support. So, this would bring a minimum, it is very competitive, but it would bring a minimum of $1 million into our community over a two-year period, and also, bringing those funds in would, even though we have a smaller homeless youth population, we have more of the older population, but bringing those funds in would free up resources for the older population, also for serving families. It could also help decrease the time that, right now, the youth are having to wait for housing. So, getting it from our housing authority, which that's not their name anymore, currently, it's a two-to-two-and-a-half-year wait time for a single bedroom, and also 12 to 18 months for a two-to-five bedroom. So, I will be following the city's approval process as we try and pursue these funds, and the city, as the and the city, as the collaborative applicant, is actually the one that has to push the button to submit the grant. And I would like to, at this point, encourage you to appoint to the HIAAC, when they're going to have a position opening up in May, to appoint, to appoint a youth representative. And there are some of the youth that are on my YAB, my Youth Action Board Addressing Homelessness, that are interested in serving in that role. And then also, um, I am meeting with our new city manager, Deborah Campbell, on tax day, so I have to get my taxes done before then, um, but, and to also talk about this opportunity. So, um, I have a little bit of information about city staff's findings to date. I don't know if you're interested in that information. I have stuff I could share, or if you have any questions about the funding opportunity?
Nope. Yep. Nope. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. The next person I have signed up to speak is Sharon Semrell.
Pardon me if I mispronounced your last name. Yeah, I read terribly. I'm Rashawn Semrell. I am a member of the Tree Commission and appointed to the Technical Review Committee, and I'm sorry if I cough through this, but spring has sprung. Um, I'm here to plead for an urban forester. Um, I believe that our plea for an urban forester has fallen on deaf ears. Um, I see the need for an urban forester to help preserve our canopy, which we are rapidly losing. We lack enforcement to monitor the trees that are required for development, as so many developments are not monitored after the final inspection to make sure the trees and shrubs are still alive and healthy. So many are not. We on the Tree Commission are foresters, professors, contractor, landscape architect, and a formal council member, along with city staff and Executive Director of Greenworks, and we all discuss that we do not want to be the enemy of development, but want to work with development in new and innovative ways, such as tree banking and other new tree-saving ideas that other progressive cities are doing under the supervisor, supervision of an urban forester. The cities that have urban foresters, such as Charlotte, are saving the community in approximately $900,000 in energy savings, and working with developers in a cohesive and fluid manner, as opposed of the rigid structure that we are working with now. As Steven Hendricks, our chair, says, "It's hard to retrofit green space and canopy once it's lost." Please think about our future. Trees make people happy, and the benefits are immeasurable, and we really need an urban forester, so thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Amy Kemp.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having me today. Um, I wanted to speak for a few minutes about some of my concerns associated with development and aesthetics and intangibles. Um, my overall impression right now is that we're expanding our downtown beyond our downtown, um, but, but yeah, we don't know what the boundaries of that downtown will look like in the future, nor do we know exactly what we want that to be, or what will happen to our existing downtown. Much of the, um, effort to expand is into neighborhoods right now, and new zoning codes are being used that will dens- densify those neighborhoods and, um, leave people in a position of living in a city when they bought into a neighborhood. The standards, um, that are associated with development are allowing for a 200-foot, um, notification to go to residents, but there is not any, um, anything to go along with that to, uh, state who will take notes, what notes will be passed along into TRC as the development moves forward. So basically, uh, development will get approved, will go through the neighborhood, um, and be discussed with neighbors before any action is taken, and from that point forward, the changes that occur are not notified back to the residents of the neighborhoods. So we have a comprehensive plan in place that's referenced, uh, frequently during development, but only the elements of the plan that have to do with development are being used as justification for development. The intangible elements of the plan, um, that have to do with the things like Sharon Semrell just mentioned, uh, TreeSave, Open Spaces, a plan for our parks and recreation, um, future, uh, the future of our parks is not, um, addressed or not referenced back from our plan. So basically, the comprehensive plan that we have is a vision for developers, uh, and is used to justify development, but outside of that, we don't have a plan for what we want our city to actually look like in the future, how, how we will make it livable. We have individual plans that are not being connected. So I'm asking you to work with people in the neighborhoods, work with people in the community, to bring transparency to the changes that are underway right now, changes in ordinances, changes to ordinances that are being planned by the city. We'd like to know what those are. We'd like to know what those look like before they come to city council. Um, I understand in the past that there has been transparency in that regard, that there had been, um, lists that were available to the community to make, to, um, allow people to know what changes are impending, so I'm, I'm asking for that transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person I have signed up to speak is Rob Heb.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I am Robert Heb, a retired state law enforcement officer. I visited your website today, and right off, I noticed that, uh, Asheville City Council has authority to determine policy in the fields of planning traffic, law and order, public works, finance, and recreation. Law and the enforcement of the law is what I'm here to brief you on tonight. It is the law governing abortion. The controversy on abortion has actually been going on for some time, but ideas and conviction of the populace is starting to change, even here in western North Carolina. The unborn victims of Violence Act of 2004 recognizes embryo or fetus in youth throat as a legal victim if they are injured or killed during the commission of crimes of violence. The law defines child in youth throat as a member of the species Homo sapiens at any stage of development who is carried in the womb. Even the United Nations, the Convention on the Rights of the Child, the only modern international treaty specifically tackling the fetal rights, visualizes that the fetal right to life is at the moment of conception. The human beings inside the womb are smaller, less developed, and more dependent than the human beings outside the womb. These are the differences of degree, not the difference of kind. We can all point to other people who are bigger, stronger, smarter, smarter, and less dependent than we are, but that doesn't make their life, or their life any less valuable, or any less deserving of our protection. The only difference between you and that unborn child are size and development, dependency and environment. If you just look at these differences, it's easy to see that none of them are sufficient to justify abortion, because each of them can equally apply to many people outside the womb. Think about it, even in our own local rest homes, we have family members that are less developed and are certainly dependent on other people. Yet, right down here on McDowell Street at Planned Parenthood, many abortions are taking place each week. They call it a clinic abortion, because they never want to use the word babies, but deep down inside, we all know they're exterminating babies. So as ruling members of our society, I ask you to step up. I ask you to take the necessary action to stop the weekly murders that are here in our own town of Asheville, right down on McDowell Street. For someday, we will all be held accountable. Thank you very much.
The next person I have signed up to speak is Zach Heb.
City council members, I want to thank you for your service and testify to you my humble submission to you as your, as God's ordained civil magistrates in the duty to preserve justice and work to punish evil. You have this position because ultimately, the ultimate authority giver, namely the God of the Bible, has given you this position. My name is Zach Heb, and I too, here, am coming to you today to be a voice for our voiceless preborn neighbors who are being murdered in this city under your watch. Precious preborn babies made in the image of God are murdered in this city on a regular basis under your watch, at what most people refer to as Planned Parenthood. I want to warn you that you will give an account for not acting on behalf of these preborn babies. You are violating your God-giving duty as a civil magistrate to not uphold justice and protect the innocent in this city. The church, those who are believers in Jesus Christ, should be the conscience of our culture. Therefore, it is my Christian duty to instruct you of your God-ordained purpose to establish justice and punish evil. You have the responsibility to defy the lawless actions of the United States Supreme Court. Roe v. Wade should be defied by all lesser magistrates like yourselves, and all humans, even the preborn, should be provided equal protection under law. Roe v. Wade is not law. It is a fundamental flawed court opinion. The Supreme Court has not been given the duty or power of legislation, but guess what, council? You do have that power. As it was mentioned, per your website, Asheville City Council has the authority to determine policy in the field of law and order. Protecting the innocent, our preborn neighbors, is obviously an issue of law and order. You have been given the job to protect the innocent, and with all due respect, you have epically failed. These children have no voice, and you must speak for them. They cannot defend themselves, so you must come to their defense. Abortion is the premeditated murder of an innocent human being, and you have a duty before God to treat and punish it as murder, which means you should bring all women, men, doctors, and anyone else aiding in this crime to justice. I'm pleading with you to stop the bloodshed in this city. You can do so by ignoring and defying the lawless court opinion of Roe v. Wade and abolish abortion in this city immediately. You can make Asheville a sanctuary city for preborn children. These preborn children are demanding your interposition. You will be held accountable before God for not interposing, so I encourage you to act now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next person I have signed up to speak is Reed Thompson.
Good evening. My name's Reed Thompson. I live on Maxwell Street. Uh, and I'm gonna start with a quote this evening. Primitive societies live by the rule of might, and the strong prevail. Advanced societies live by the rule of law, and the privileged prevail. Enlightened societies live by the rule of love, and everyone prevails. I've been reading some self-help books because I can't understand why for 15 years, the rule hasn't applied on my street. And the Turners, who Jan Davis asked me not to mention, and I was told I was gonna get some help back then, own the property. Why do the Turners not have to follow the law, Julie? This is where I, this is where I live. I would live in this house. I bought this house 15 years ago to move into. I've never moved into it because the city doesn't see this as... Actually, this isn't even the video I wanna be on. This is your guy that doesn't, uh... Oh, crud. Okay. Blah, 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 blah. Ah, here we go. I'm not very good with your computer, I can tell. The long and the short of it is, there have been trucks today. I counted at least 12 violations before 11 o'clock, and then I quit counting. I brought you all a plan because you all asked me to engage in the process. My neighbors supported that plan. The community supported that plan. CAN came out and supported that plan. The only people in the community that didn't support that plan are your staff and you. What I wanna know is why my neighbor has been allowed to break the law for 15 years, and why we aren't investigating the fact that Charles Worley wrote the UDO. It was his client that has violated the UDO all of these years. And I quite honestly think you all have a duty to look into corruption in your system. Brownie Newman, look where he is now. I've got pictures of him standing on the sidewalk in 2006, 2007, and he was gonna help me.
Thank you.
And I brought you a ton of pictures. I brought you the Owens Report, and right here it is from the man, you all got a report, 18-page report that you can't follow.
Thank you.
And I would love to get some feedback on why you refused yourself, Esther, and you don't refuse yourself from the McKibben Room, because you took $2,000 from me.
So if there's anyone else, sir...
How much did you take from the McKibben Room?
If there's anyone else wishing to speak, I have finished all the people that have signed up, but if there's anyone else who has not yet spoken and wants to speak, uh, please raise your hand. I'm looking at you again.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Wayne Scott, and I, uh, just wanna thank you again for correcting the record on the even-year election cycle and all of that kinda stuff. I think it was a great improvement to our city. I think it's a little bit poor form, though, to ask Senator Edwards if he would put this into the bill. It's sort of like, it feels like, you know, you made a deal. You know, if you do this, will you do this for us? Yes, we'll do this, and then, you know, we're gonna turn around and either, you know, try to undo what 100% of the Senate voted on, unanimous vote, uh, to have districts and, uh, district elections here in Asheville, and it's like, to take the favor that he gave you and us, which I, I still agree with that structural element of that, but then to turn around and try to either undo it or sue them, I think is poor form, and, and, uh, you know, I don't think that this bodes very well for our next senator, Julie Mayfield, who if you get there, uh, you know, it's like, you know, how welcome will you be in the Senate if you spent the last year, you know, trying to, to undo what they did? So I think that, you know, we should move forward with this, uh, situation with the districts, and again, um, you know, it's just a big distraction, and, and I think that, obviously, the gerrymandering situation, the data will bear out to show that that's not the case, uh, that we haven't been attacked by 100% of the Senate, and I think it's, uh, I think it's just irresponsible to continue to, to go down this road. I think it's something that we should go ahead and clear up and, and take care of, and, you know, I mean, Terry Van Dyne is gonna be our next lieutenant governor, so we're gonna have Terry Van Dyne in the governor's office, and we're gonna have Senator Mayfield, and, you know, so working on some better, you know, relationships with Raleigh might be a great thing to do, and I think this is, be a good way to do it. Thanks.
Senator Mayfield. Yeah, that's pretty good. Not get ahead of ourselves. Um, I think I saw another head.
Hi, all. Shane McCarthy again. Been making mics for taller people.
Yeah, I know, we do.
Yeah. So anyway, I wanna talk about the Flatiron Building, 'cause I know that's a big item that's gonna be coming your, your way in, in a little while. So, um, there's plans to turn it into a hotel, and it's a pretty big deal. It's, because, um, that's one of the last places where there's office space in downtown, especially affordable office space. There's a lot of local businesses that occupy that space that will be turned into, get another hotel. And I think that's gonna have a big impact on the people who live in Asheville, because those jobs are, uh, they're living wage jobs, they're jobs you can raise a family on. And, you know, I have a good friend who works at a hotel. Those jobs are not. So, if that project gets approved, it's gonna be displacing a lot of good-paying local businesses with another hotel, and kinda continuing the cycle of replacing good-paying jobs with lower-wage jobs. So I just hope you guys take that into consideration whenever this comes down the pipeline to you.
Thanks. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to, yes? Is there anyone else wishing to, yes?
Good evening. My name's Velvet Hawthorne. I live on 17 Maxwell Street. I've owned my house there for nine years. What Reed was showing you is something we deal with every single day. I wake up every morning around 6:30 with tons of noise, dump trucks. I know I've raised this in the past. There are numerous times where the sidewalks blocked, and people are trying to walk or with their baby strollers, and they can't get across the sidewalk. They have to go out into the street. It's a very dangerous street. I've had my car totaled by a tractor-trailer delivering sushi to Whole Foods, trying to go up my street and make a turn that he wasn't able to do. And so he backed up and continued to drag my car up the street and rip a shred all the way up where I lost my door, and, you know. Also, there's just so much noise, and people don't realize it. Now, with the weather the way it is, I open my windows, I want to have fresh air. I wake up every morning at least 6:00 or 6:30 with the noise of the store. The back end of the store, they're just banging carts all morning long. And the air conditioning unit runs, the refrigeration unit runs, the freezer unit runs, and it's just this loud hum constantly. So there's no noise barrier like Harris Teeter and Trader Joe's have. I've been by those stores. I've walked by those stores on a regular basis, go in those stores. And I'm just, I'm just astounded as to why, all these years, even though I haven't lived here for 15 years, like Reed Thompson has, many of the neighbors are so tired of it. And I know I've been here in the past about it. I don't see an improvement. I see it getting worse. Today, there was a truck parked for over 45 minutes in front of a fire hydrant, right in the corner, waiting his turn, and he unloaded on the street and wheeled his grocery, his product into the store without using the loading dock. So I would love for someone to just come and spend an hour and a half in the morning and see what we see, and see if there's some resolution that can be made between the way this is handled. And I can tell you, from living there, the other side of the store, perfect location for a loading dock. Don't know why. They've got the buffer, they've got everything they need. It's their property. I don't know why they don't put the loading dock over there. I've reached out to the regional manager. He said he would meet with the neighbors, never heard another word from him at Whole Foods, so, after my car was wrecked. So anyways, I just wanted to add on to the fact that this hasn't ended, and it just continues. It doesn't get any better. They tried to put a Band-Aid on it by having a group of police officers there. They were very nice. I think they were there for maybe a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, we have a closed session, so we have a closed session motion.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statutes. The law that makes information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318.11A3. The statutory authorization contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318.11A1. To consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between a city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to a lawsuit or potential lawsuit. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318.11A3.
Second. Great. So we have a motion and a second. And before we vote on that, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Sabrina Ruckoff, our interim city attorney, who's still here, thinking, "I won't have to be here anymore at 7:30," for all your work with the city and your, and the other attorneys of your firm that helped us out as well. So please extend our thank you to them, too. So with that, yay, Sabrina. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post. All right, we will adjourn from the closed session.